...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Is anybody in here on campus? Sandy, of course, on Zoom.
Well, we've only got two people.
Just two people.
Andy's over there. Don will be joining us on Zoom also when he's supposed to.
Okay. Okay. All right. So we call meeting order. Look for motion of agenda approval. No additions. We're supposed to approve. Okay. Tucker, Rick?
Bruce.
Bruce?
Two to one.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both?
Aye.
Approve the minutes from the eleven twenty-three meeting?
I read through the meeting minutes, but they all look pretty good, so I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Minutes approved. Do we have any general public concerns? Well, we wouldn't have them in person, but phone, Zoom. Anything? Okay. Hearing, seeing none. And did Sandy just say I didn't hear on the Zoom that Don'd be here at night? Is that what her comment was?
Okay. Don would be fine in there.
So we'll move down to this twenty-eight E agreement with the City of Rockland for Law Enforcement Services.
Just to renew, isn't it?
They are the only one that didn't re-sign the contract yet. There were several of those that didn't have the unified law enforcement that we sent contracts out to, and everything came back with broken. So this is the last one.
They got their sign. All righty. I'll authorize the chairman to sign the twenty-eight E agreement with the City of Rockland for Law Enforcement Services.
I'll second.
All right. Any further discussion?
I think those are still just year to year then.
This is a, I think it's a three-year, two?
Three-year or two or three, I don't know how many years it was.
Through June thirty of twenty-twenty-two.
Two years?
Two.
Mm-hmm. Two years.
Year and a half.
Oh, yeah. We're being serious.
This will bring everybody into the same.
Cycle.
Cycle, yeah, because the people that were on the law enforcement levy had a different ending date than these guys did, so we changed these to match.
So then we'll put them all together at one clock?
It'll all, at least all expire at the same time. They'll still be under two different, yeah, contracts, but.
All righty. Anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Carry. I will sign this. In the meantime, you have a very short agenda, but I guess we can go through committee reports.
Well, it's gonna be shorter, because I have no committee reports in the board.
Tuesday night, I'm trying to see through the fog here, I lost my, my book out of my seat. Twenty-fourth. I think it's twenty-fourth. Tuesday night, I have no meeting, that was a long conference. All of that seems to be going well. That's all I have.
Sandy's up.
Okay. I had no official meetings. This is the first in a week now, long time.
The only thing I had was a VA on Wednesday, the twenty-eighth, eighteen, twenty-fifth? Twenty-fifth.
I had, I didn't.
Approve the claims, that's all I had.
I didn't have anything officially, because my meeting got moved to this week. So no official meetings, and I just told everybody, been looking at a lot of the drainage issues on BD eighteen, finishing up projects, but no official meetings this past week.
Yeah. Is everybody else good on it? Okay. What did he say? Was he saying we need another?
Oh, I'll check, maybe he came in late. Okay.
Say, Bruce says, I moved closed on that property, or the food pantry.
I just checked, Don and Allison, I looked at them, too, they wanted to go earlier.
Think they're still negotiating all the terms of the town like it is.
I did write something in favor, so I figured it was on me. Am I looking at this correctly, is that Drainage District, Iowa Drainage District Association meeting this Friday?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I don't know if I did write it down correctly.
Is it same starting time at eight?
Starts at nine-thirty.
Nine-thirty?
Nine-thirty, and it's just probably gonna be an hour-long business meeting, and then you go on.
And then if we want our own chicken, we have to?
Yeah, if you want your own chicken, you got school to do for this.
Oh, mercy.
I'll let you go kill it, so there's so many of those down there.
Yeah. We gotta have a quorum. If all the executive board members need, it is a quorum. So if we need to get more people, I'll make some calls.
I was gonna say, I want to.
Because John was checking yesterday who all was showing up, and.
I can adjust my schedule if you need me to come, I can come, but if you don't.
I'll check with John today and make sure.
I don't really wanna get upset amongst the bunch of people.
Is it fair, because you're on the board?
Yeah.
I mean, if you go and John says that's enough, if.
Yeah, if we have that many, as long as we have a quorum.
That's, they didn't even really wanna have it, but their bylaws state they have to have it.
They have to do it at person, yeah.
So are they gonna, did they ever figure out, were they gonna video it, so that we can watch it?
Yeah, I think it's, yeah, I think it's gonna be on Zoom site.
That's what I wondered.
Don't think there's, well, they're probably giving up.
Well, you know, technically, it.
No.
No, it won't be, because it doesn't allow for it. The bylaws don't allow for it.
Well, maybe.
I mean, you could watch, but you couldn't vote.
Right.
Put it that way.
And they probably aren't gonna mess with that.
They don't want speakers, right?
No, no speakers, we're just gonna.
Just business meeting.
We got two people up for reelection, myself and, I don't know if it's Barry Anderson or somebody from Emmett County.
Do you need someone to push the vote?
I don't do, so. I know there's a Carl, not Carl, Dean from Bright County would like to be on the board, but they only have so many are allowed to be on the executive board, so.
I'll be home if you need somebody else, let me know.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, although I kind of agree with Bruce, we're trying to do all this lack of group business, you know, less group activity.
And really, we're just kinda going through the motions to make it legal.
Make it.
Yeah.
Like we did.
Make it legal. Basically, you re-elect the two officers and approve the budget, which the budget is, I mean, we usually have like a four-hundred-dollar carryover. It's a very tight budget and.
Oh, it is, though, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
So it's nothing that you know of that's.
Nothing's too concerning in the budget, it's actually, we're actually a little bit below. Coming in our last quarter looked good, so.
Oh, yeah.
And then not having this annual meeting saves a ton of money.
Yeah, they have a little extra then that way for next year. So really, we're staying, if Rick doesn't say anything, he can go over there and present and.
Yeah.
Call it good for this, this part of it, yeah. That's fine with me. But if you do need somebody, I'm always interested in this, but yeah, even when they have the meetings, the business part of it's pretty.
Dry.
Yeah. There's not too much.
Sorry, I thought you were done.
No, go ahead.
I just talked to Don, she's gonna sign on in just a couple minutes.
Perfect, perfect.
We're, we're, we're pretty well done with our business.
Peggy, do you have anything?
I know, I texted her what she thinks, so I called her, so.
Thanks, Sandy. Thank you. That's awesome, moving along. Peggy doesn't have anything today?
Nothing.
Peggy appears good since we put the signs on the door now, or are you having any issues with?
No, don't seem.
Backing up in the hallway, or everybody staying according to calls and?
And each other has gone out in the hallway, people have been asking.
Awesome.
Yeah, it looks good.
Go ahead.
I'd like to hear it back.
Well, according to the news, they said Iowa's numbers are.
Starting to drop.
Starting to drop, so.
That's good.
They've even had less numbers in hospitals and ICUs because of, hopefully, the number's dropping, so that's a positive sign.
I think a good majority of the people's cut their Thanksgiving things down in size.
Oh, yeah, they did.
So I think that will help immensely.
Well.
They did.
Keep our fingers crossed and for a few weeks together of decline and see where we end up, so.
I talked to my brother-in-law down in Branson, and he said everything's full down there. Springfield, they're shipping all of them to Springfield, it's a big hospital. Now they're shipping them back, if you get COVID, you go into the local hospital. Springfield's real.
I know, that's kinda what some of the local hospitals are doing, they're trying to keep the COVID all in one building, do their surgeries and things in the other, so.
Here, but Don is on now, so.
Okay. Hi, Don.
Good morning.
We're just waiting with bated breath for your presentation.
Okay. First of all, I'll introduce myself, and I would like to meet the rest of your board. I have had the opportunity to meet with Sandy a couple of different times, being on Zoom. I am just wanting to connect with all of you, because this is a big decision for you as a board, to switch from county services to Rolling Hills. So it's really important to me to be able to get out, meet with you, obviously, at the time of, you know, the virus being, so, ramp it right now, I thought that this would be the safest way to be able to meet with all of you. So, I am Don Spencer, I am the CEO for Rolling Hills. I have been the CEO since the region started in July of two thousand and twenty. Prior to that, I worked, I'm an employee of Goodison County, have been for twenty-six years, and have been in the mental health field for basically half of my life, so you can figure out the math on that. So, anyway, really looking forward to meeting all of you, so if you would just, you know, go around and do introductions, I would really like to know what I'm speaking with, and my whole point of meeting with you is to read that memorandum of understanding, and answer any questions that you may have, and hopefully, questions that you have about our region and how we operate. So, go ahead and introduce yourselves, and I'll, I'll just keep it over from there.
Well, I guess I'm right here in the spot, I'm Rick Peterson, board member.
Okay. Hi, Rick.
Hi there.
Nice to meet you.
I'm Bruce Rymer, board member.
Bruce?
Yes, Bruce.
Okay, thank you, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
I'm Dave Lee, board member. Hi, Don.
There we go.
Hi, Don, I'm Ericun, Ericun Burg, presently the chair till the end of the year, so.
Okay.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you. And we have to.
More is just three minutes.
So, do you all have a copy of the memorandum of understanding in front of you?
Yeah.
Okay. I did, I did have a quote with me a little bit ago, I, I know that this resolution is going to require action at some point. I am urging you to hold off on seeking action on this MOU until I have the signatures of the majority of the counties from Rolling Hills. So, our region is of a, currently, we are Goodison, St. Anne, Thomasville, Cherokee, Carroll, Crawford, Bynum, I think I've got them all. Anyway, Woodbury, that's the big one, Woodbury just joined us since July of two thousand and nineteen, and that was a lot of work to bring that into the region. So, we do have a group with new member counties joining on, I've met a couple of them this year. So, we only at this point have two of the member counties that have taken action on their resolutions, which were sent to them on November ninth. And the last paragraph, or last paragraph of the MOU does state that for you to take action on this to be accepted into Rolling Hills, we have to have the majority of the Rolling Hills member counties signing these resolutions. So, I was hoping to have all those files back, because my assumption is, because the auditors have been super busy with the election, and there's been a lot of departments that have been short-staffed because of the pandemic, that it just has not been put forward in front of their board. I did send a reminder to all the auditors today to let them know that I need to give those back as soon as possible, and actually, as we, as I'm thinking, I see that I'm getting email responses from the auditors in the board. I know that there, there is no concern as far as accepting Humble, Pocahontas counties. I did have one board member who was a little hesitant to grow our region any bigger than what it is currently. Taking on Woodbury County, which the majority of our counties are very rural by nature, Woodbury County obviously doubles the size of our population. That was a huge undertaking for us, but it was also one of the, probably, it was a really good thing that we did that, because it really expanded our services as well as the core service requirements that they already had in place. So, it was really a good move to bring them in, and I, I see that bringing in Humble, Pocahontas is going to be probably a much smoother transition, and it's going to be, as I've said many times, Woodbury, I feel like they have been part of our region since the inception, and I really don't see this any different with Humble, Pocahontas counties, because both New York counties are relatively small and similar to the, the majority of our counties population-wise. And, and one of the things that I have been able to see through is conversations with some of the staff, Allison Townsend, Tony, Alex Lu from Pocahontas County, I really think that there is going to be a need to really look at what services are available in Humboldt County and Pocahontas County as well, and where we need to look at filling gaps. Because I know that some of the staff have been doing some direct services, I think that's really important to look at where we could meet that need and fill the gaps. So that's one of the things I really wanna get a very good understanding of here in the next six months, so that we can look at where we need to go in the next six, seven years. So, our region, just to give you a little background, our region is very, so, the one way that I would describe our region is that we are very collaborative in nature. Our providers, I'm very proud of our providers, they work very well together, they are definitely partners with us, and they are considered stakeholders in all of the planning processes that we are putting into place to be able to meet the core services requirements, and it's very important for me to work with our providers and make them feel like they are a part of the process, because obviously, they are the ones doing the real work, who's done the groundwork. So, that, that's the one thing I could say about our, our region that I'm very proud of, is that we have a very strong camaraderie across our region, providers, the government board, every, all the staff, everybody works very well together, and I'm very proud of that. So I, I will write on that one, because it doesn't happen in every region, so. I guess, what questions would you have for me before I get into the MOU? Sandy, do you have any questions for the rest of the board? I feel very comfortable going to Rolling Hills, and I participate in a lot of meetings. The only, the only thing I, I see brain injuries, that's the only one, and I don't know if we have any brain injuries, people on our, you know, in our camp. Allison, maybe she could speak to that, she may know the answer to that.
Sure, yeah, so I did check, we do not have anybody currently that's on the brain injury waitlist out of Myqua and Pocahontas or Humboldt. We also do not have anybody, Don, as you'll be hearing, maybe here in NRCF either, so those are the two, I was able to relocate those individuals, so we are, we are good in those two, those two areas currently.
That was, that was live one, and I should have asked Allison before, because I'm. Yeah, so, I guess one of the questions I would have in response to that is, county social services, do they fund people with brain injuries? Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's. Yeah, they did, if they, yeah, they, they funded weightless individuals with brain injuries for IRD and, and for brain injuries, is what we did, both to fill that gap until there's funding available, as long as those are ready to get on hand.
So, it was an ongoing funding that, it was more just gap funding.
Correct. Sometimes, I mean, it might take that year, but it was just those individuals that came in, and so we funded them, and tell, and we worked diligently to try to get them on their Medicaid, and get them, you know, get them into waivers, find some other additional waiver, you know, some type of physical disability or something, until they were able to get on that brain injury, so.
Yes, and, and that's a good question, Sandy, that is one of the population groups that is not required to be funded, and that is not a population group that our board does disagree to fund, or is already within our management plan. You know, we always get any exceptions to the rule, we have situations that just don't fit the mix, and we have to pick up, we usually, the region by default becomes the funder of last resort, yes, there are a lot of situations where we have to pick up the pieces of grant situations that don't fit within the Medicaid for the doors, so, we do do that, I mean, so I can assure you that, we, we look at every case by case, and then take those decisions based on what the individual needs are, so, it's not, it's been seen, yes, we will hunt the eyes, so. Okay, good, that's good to know. Yep.
I have a question, are, have we done any projections as to the money that we've spent in the last year or so for the services that we've been getting, and how would it compare to the service that Rolling Hills would provide for us? Are we, are we gonna be looking at the same, roughly the same type of money, or, I mean, I guess that's my question.
Yes, so, good question. Allison has presented, it's been numbers to me in terms of the capita, based on spending. Humboldt County is at twenty-six per capita currently. Right now, we are, our region is contributing, all the counties contributing at thirty-six dollars per capita. I can tell you, I anticipate that that will be increasing. Our maximum per capita is similar to what your current max per capita is, and we are at forty-two seventy-nine, which is just a little bit under where the CFS region is, and because of all of the core service requirements that we are trying to meet, as well as now having the children's system rest upon, just because of legislation that was passed over a year ago, we do have a lot of obligations, and so we will be looking at, you know, possibly going up. And I will, I'm planning to start the budget process here this, this week, with all of the cares, we did three rounds of care applications, and that was hugely time-consuming for me. And so I have not been able to put a consensus paper and really correct those numbers for you, but if you are at a twenty-six dollars per capita, and you will see in the MOU that it does have language that states that you will understand that you are going to be contributing an equal per capita to the rest of the member counties, which some of that is going to be contributed to the reserve level because of the core service development, and that was really important to our board, that you're, you're contributing your fair share, because when we had Woodbury County come in, we knew that there was a chance to have our region subsidize Woodbury County, so they agreed to contribute an additional million dollars to the reserve level, coming in, so that we can avoid that subsidization in the first year. So, if you are going to be contributing higher than what you're going to be receiving back in services, you know, there's nowhere around that. That is regionalization at its time, and that is the way it works. Calvin County is one of our, we did, there is, that's a example of that. Calvin County has been very small, very rural, we did, when the region first started, tried very hard to get services over there for mental health, and we did expand services, they are contributing well of what they are getting back in services, and unfortunately, I mean, it, it's, it's hard for our board to accept that, but, so, we, I think it's very important for our board to have an equal per capita. So, as far as giving you hard numbers today, I have not been able to do that, because the CARES Act stuff has been extremely time-consuming in addition to the annual report, that was due to the state on Sunday tomorrow, and I was having, it took me three weeks to get the financial report balanced with our imminent auditors' report, and so that, that's it. High on my priority list as well, so I am going to be starting on the budget this week, hopefully by the end of December, you will have hard numbers for your Humboldt County budget. And just as you understand too, I do, in addition to the region's budget, I do all of the member county budgets, so that I have a good understanding of where everybody is at in terms of their levy, and where they need to be. So what I will do is, I will be getting your information from your auditor, and I will be putting those numbers together, and then giving you a projected levy recommendation. Now, it's gonna be up to your board to decide how high you wanna levy, I'm going to tell you when the capita is for the region, and then your board, based on whatever fund balance you're projecting at the end of this year, and whatever funds you're going to be receiving from CFS at the end of the year, where you wanna set your levy. That is gonna be completely up to your board.
Don?
Yes.
That would, and that would, yeah, that kinda answered one of our questions. That would, once you hash through that, we'll have a number, then that would be applied, there's a date on here in memo of understanding, so was it starting at the beginning of the fiscal year, or with this MOU? But I mean, that, that would be due when, then, I guess?
Not, it's the next fiscal year. So, this memorandum of understanding is for two counties to join us on July first, but because we're doing the FY twenty-two budget, I need to start working on your budget, as well as all the member counties' budgets this month, so that when you set your budget in January for FY twenty-two.
Right.
You can have those numbers from us, so that you can set your levy.
Right. That answered your question, and then that would, yeah, that would be, because we would officially be joining Rolling Hills in that fiscal year, then.
Correct.
Okay, I think that, I think that clears, clears off, and plus you just kinda went through your description, so we should be fine with that. Thank you.
Yeah, I know, well, when your crap is still here, you have joining mid-year, but we're planning for the next, it does get confusing.
Well, it's actually better to do it this way, so it's not like in the middle of everything.
Right, and I need to, at the same time, when I am working on your budget, I need to also spend some time in current doubt to make sure that I'm getting the accurate numbers as far as what Humboldt County is getting in services. I do trust Allison's projection of twenty-six dollars per capita, as far as what you're actually receiving in services, so I wanna make sure I have a clear understanding of what your fund balance is gonna be on FY twenty, so that when I'm giving you a levy recommendation, you're not gonna be increasing the levy higher than where it needs to be.
Good.
So, coupled with not wanting to overtax your constituents, we also have to look at, FY twenty-two is the target year that we have to have our fund balance down. So, we have, we're working at the same time, this is where, since I filed my bill for really threw a wrench into the region. So, we are all, as member counties and the region collectively, required to be at a forty percent fund balance by FY twenty-three. So, for the end of FY twenty-two, we have to be down to that forty percent level, otherwise, the following year, we have to provide proper detax relief to all the member counties, and that's gonna be fiscal nightmare.
Right.
For myself, for the government board, so we have actually.
They're kinda late, and it's a huge surplus, right?
I'd say six of our eight counties are, half that forty percent are below, but when you take the region's ballot and you put that all together, we're actually sitting at about a sixty percent fund balance right now. And, and the main reason was, because once the pandemic hit in March, it slowed all of the strategic planning down that we were doing towards core service development, and we were not able to spend exactly what we anticipated for FY twenty, we were a million dollars under budget, so that, of course, we're a million dollars in our, in our fund balance, tighter than what our projection was, and so we're working towards setting that down, so we don't want Humboldt County to over, overtax, that's for sure.
Right.
...who's a little hesitant to grow our region any bigger than what it is currently. Uh, taking on Woodbury County, which the majority of our counties are very rural by nature. Woodbury County obviously doubles the size of our population. Uh, that was a huge undertaking for us, but it was also one of the probably, it was a really good thing that we did that because it really expanded our services as well as the core service requirements that they already had in place. So it was really, um, a good move to bring them in. And I, I see that bringing in Humboldt, Pocahontas is going to be probably a much smoother, uh, transition and it's going to be, as I've said many times with Woodbury, I feel like they have been part of our region since the inception. And I really don't see that any different with Humboldt, Pocahontas counties. Because both New York counties relatively small and similar to the, the majority of our counties population wise. Um, and, and one of the things that I have been able to see through, um, is conversations with some of the staff, Allison Townsend, Tony, Alex Blue from Pocahontas County. I really think that there is going to be a need to really look at what services are available in Humboldt County and Pocahontas County as well and where we need to look at filling gaps. Because I know that some of the staff have been doing some direct services. I think that's really important to look at where we could meet that need and fill the gap. So that's one of the things I really want to get a very, uh, good understanding of here in the next six months so that we can look at where we need to go, um, in the next six, difficult years. So, um, our region, just to give you a little background, our region is, um, a very, so, the one way that I would describe our region is that we are very collaborative in, uh, nature. Our providers, I'm very proud of our providers. They work very well together. They are definitely partners with us and, uh, they are considered stakeholders in all of the planning processes that we are putting into place to be able to meet the core services requirements. And, uh, it's very important for me to work with our providers and make them feel like they are a part of the process. Because obviously they are the ones doing the real work, the underground work. So, uh, that, that's the one thing I could say about our, our region that I'm very proud of is that uh, we have a very strong camaraderie across our region, providers, uh, the government board, every, all the staff, everybody works very well together and I'm very proud of that. So I, I will write on that one because it doesn't happen in every region. So, um, the, I guess, what question would you have for me before I get into the MOU? Do you have any questions for the rest of the board?
I feel very comfortable with going to Rowan Hills, um, and I participate in a lot of meetings. The only, the only thing I need, uh, brain injury, that's the only one. I don't know if we have a brain injury equal on all of, you know, in, in our camp.
Allison, maybe she could speak to that. She may know the answer to that.
Sure, yeah. So, like I said, we do not have anybody currently that's on the brain injury waitlist out of my squad in Pocahontas or Humboldt. We also do not have anybody, Dawn, if you'll be happy, maybe here in NRCF either. So, um, those are the two. I was able to relocate those individuals. So we are, we are good in those two, two areas currently.
That was, that was live one, and I should have asked Allison before. Yeah, so just, I guess, one of the questions I would have in response to that is the county social services, did they fund people with brain injuries?
Yeah, that's what they did is they, yeah, they, they funded weightlifting individuals with brain injuries for autism and, uh, and for brain injuries, what we did. Both to fill that gap until there's a lot of these available, as long as those are ready to get on hand.
So it wasn't an ongoing funding that, um, it was more just gap funding?
Correct. Sometimes, I mean, it might take that year, but it was just those individuals out that came in. And so we funded them until we worked diligently to try to get them on their Medicaid and get them, you know, get them into waivers, fliers, find some other additional waiver, you know, some time to use a physical disability or something until they were able to get on that brain injury.
Yes, uh, and, and I'd like to ask you, that is, uh, one of the population groups that is not required to go into the fund. And that is not a population group that are, uh, or just disagree to fund or ignore it within our management plan. You know, there's always going to be exceptions to the rule. We have situations that just don't fit the mix and we have to pick up. We usually, the region's by default because the funder of last resort, he has, uh, because there are a lot of situations where we have to pick up the pieces and fund situations that just don't fit within the Medicaid requirements. So we do do that. I mean, so I can assure you that we, we look at every case by case and then take those decisions based on what the individual needs are. So it's not as soon as we see, yes, we will fund the I. So, right, okay, good. That's good to know.
I have a question. Are, are, have we done any projections as to the money that we've spent in the last year or so for the services that we've been getting? And how would it compare to the service that Rowan Hills would provide for us? Are we, are we going to be looking at the same, roughly the same type of money or, I mean, I guess that's my question.
Yes, so, good question. Allison has presented, um, it's the number two me as terms of the cap data basis spending. Humboldt County is at 26 for cap data currently. Right now, we are, our region is contributing, all the counties contributing at $36 for cap data. I can tell you, I anticipate that that will be increasing. Our maximum for cap data is similar to what your current max for cap data is. And we are at 4279, which is just a little bit under where the CFS region is. And because of all of the core service requirements that we are trying to meet as well as now having the children's system pressed upon just because of legislation that was passed over a year ago, we do have a lot of obligations and so we will be looking at, you know, possibly going up. Uh, and I will, I'm planning to start the budget process here this, this week. Uh, with all of the cares, we did three rounds of care applications and that was hugely time consuming for me. And so I have not been able to put a consultant paper and really correct those numbers for you. But if you are at a $26 for cap data and you will see in the MOU that it does have language that states that you will understand that you are going to be contributing an equal for cap data to the rest of the member counties, which some of that is going to be contributed to the reserve level because of the core service development. And that was really important to our board because you're, you're contributing your fair share. Because when we had Woodbury County come in, um, we knew that there was a chance to have our region subsidize Woodbury County. So they agreed to contribute an additional $1 million to the reserve level, uh, coming in so that we can avoid that subsidization in the first year. So if you are going to be contributing, um, higher than what you're going to be receiving back in services, you know, there, there's no way around that. That is regionalization at a time and that is the way it works. Calvin County is one of our, we did, they're an exact example of that. Um, Calvin County has a very small, very rural, uh, we did, when our region first started, tried very hard to get services over there for mental health. And we did expand services. They are contributing well of what they are getting back in services. And unfortunately, I mean, it, it, it's hard for our board to accept that, but that, that we, I think, very important for our board to have an equal for cap data. So as far as giving you hard numbers today, I have not been able to do that uh, because the CARE Act stuff has been extremely time consuming in addition to the annual report that was due to the state on the date tomorrow. And I was having, um, it took me three weeks to get the financial reports balanced with our independent auditor's report. And so that, that's next. High on my priority list as well, so I am going to be starting on the budget, um, this week. Hopefully by the end of December, you will have our numbers for your Humboldt County, uh, budget. And just what you understand too, I do, in addition to the region's budget, I do all of the member county budgets. So that I have a good understanding of where everybody is at in terms of their levy and where they need to be. So what I will do is I will be getting your information from your auditor and I will be putting, uh, those numbers together and then giving you a projected levy recommendation. Now, it's going to be up to your board to decide how high you want to levy. I'm going to tell you what the cap data is for the region. And then your board, based on whatever fund balance you're projecting at the end of this year and whatever funds you're going to be receiving for CFS at the end of the year, where do you want to set your levy? That is going to be completely up to your board.
Don? That would, and that would, yeah, that kind of answered one of our questions. Uh, that would, once you hash through that, we'll have a number, then that would be applied. There's a date on here, memo of understanding, so was it start the beginning of the fiscal year or, uh, with this MOU? Um, but I mean, that, that would be due when then, I guess?
Not until next fiscal year. So this member random understanding is for two counties to join us on July 1st. But because we're doing the FY '22 budget, I need to start working on your budget as well as all the member county's budgets this month. So that way, do you set your budget in January for FY '22?
Right.
You can have those numbers from us so that you can set your levy.
Right. That answered your question. And then that would, yeah, that would be, because we would officially be joining Rowan Hills in that fiscal year then.
Correct.
Okay. I think that, I think that is, it clears, clears off and plus you just kind of went through your description. So we should be fine with that. Thank you.
Yeah, it, I know. Well, when your cap is fiscal year, you have joining mid-year, but we're planning for the next, it does get confusing.
Well, it's actually better to do it this way, so it's not like in the middle of, of everything.
Right. And I need to, at the same time, when I am working on, uh, your budget, I need to also spend some time in current doubt to make sure that I'm getting the accurate numbers as far as what Humboldt County is getting in services. I do trust Allison's projection of $26 for cap data, uh, as far as what you're actually receiving in services. But I want to make sure I have a clear understanding of what your fund balance is going to be on 6/30 so that when I'm giving you a subject recommendation, you're not going to be increasing the levy higher than where it needs to be.
Good.
So coupled with not wanting to overtax your constituents, we also have to look at FY '22 is the target year, um, that we have to have our fund balance down. So we have, we're working at the same time, this is where incentive on 504 really grew, um, our wrench into the region. So we are all, as member counties and the region collectively, required to be at a 40% fund balance by FY '23. So for the end of FY '22, we have to be down to that 40% level. Otherwise, the following year, we have to provide property tax relief to all the member counties. And that's going to be fiscal nightmare.
Right.
For myself, for the government board, so we have actually did.
Uh, they're kind of low, they can have, it's a huge surplus.
I'd say six of our eight counties are at that 40% or below. But when you take the region's balance and you put that all together, we're actually sitting at about a 60% fund balance right now. Um, and, and the main reason was because once the pandemic hit in March, it slowed all of the strategic planning down that we were doing towards core service development. And we were not able to spend exactly what we anticipated for FY '20. We were a million dollars under budget. So then, of course, we're a million dollars in our, in our fund balance higher than what our projection was. And so we're working towards making that down. So we don't want Humboldt County to over, overtax. That's for sure.
Right.
So when I do a levy recommendation, it's going to be based on trying to get your county's, um, balance down as possible as possible.
Okay, no, sounds like we'll have a good, uh, number to work with as we.
You will.
But thank, thank you. That will help a lot moving forward.
I hope so. Um, yeah, I mean, I've always been very transparent. And I want to make sure that you and the providers know exactly where you need to be. That's, that's super important to me. And I know it is too as county supervisor. So I'm going to make sure that I have a really good understanding. And, and honestly, I usually meet with all of the board. I take two, have to take two weeks that I get off the area county board and present your budget to you. I don't know if January is going to be the month that I get to talk, but I'm very pleased to that for you. I will be meeting with you to present your budget and, um, answer any questions that you have. I want to have a good understanding of where the Mount Hope budget should be and, um, and see what, what kind of questions they have.
Good. That will work for us.
Just to put a little idea on this, um, this year for CFS, we are at $30 for cap data. Before that, we were at 35, um, 18. So it was very close to what Rowan Hills was doing. The reason why we did lower, um, was because they were trying to lower the fund balance down. So just to let you know, with kids and everything coming in, that's going to pop. And, and everybody knew that too at CFS. We did a one-year flooring, which, um, you know. Yeah, it's just, okay, so, you know, I mean, everybody was attending that same boat of all the different reasons. But I just kind of wanted to let you know that.
We were at 24 a couple of years ago. We were at 375 in FY '19. This year we're at 36. So you drop it down and you just have that effect of, yeah. Yeah, kind of about 504 was a wise move to somebody, but it wouldn't have been anything. I would have moved it forward. That's for sure. You know, it's, it's a challenge. I can understand that they want us to invest in services, but we are not sitting on this, you know, you saying just hold on to all the money. We are, we are very conscious in how we spend our funds and we want to make sure that some of the investments in are going to be quality services. And it takes time to develop that. And so then, when there's this misconception that the, the regions are holding on to all of this money because we have a large fund balance, the budget not in place, you can't just throw your money at the wall and it won't stick. It actually needs a good investment.
Understandable. Okay. Does anybody have any more questions for Dawn?
I have one more.
Sure.
You said there was one county that was a, was a little hesitant on growing. Um, does this have to be unanimous from all the counties or?
He would not, when he, he would probably, if he was on this, he would tell you. Cecil Blue from Crawford County was very opposed to, uh, Woodbury County coming on board. He felt that they were going to, you know, basically consume all of the dollars from Rowan Hills. We, we took a year and a half to take Woodbury County into our region. They had requested to join us in November of '17. When we took action on that request, that following spring, we pushed her off here. We knew we needed another year. It was way too big a county to take them in hot a whim. So we held off and did really effective planning with Woodbury County. And I was very grateful to have you here to do that. It has been a huge success. And, um, so I think that, you know, at the end of the day, Cecil has admitted that this was a good thing to bring in Woodbury County and it really did not affect us in any way necessarily. I think for him, um, he was just hesitant to get big because he's been on their Crawford board. I mean, 10 years ago, we started having conversations with all of our surrounding counties about if we regionalized, what do we want this to look like? And he never wanted to be a large region. He just feels that we're going to get too big and we're going to lose sight of what's really important, which is the people that we are serving. Um, Cecil is, as of the end of December, he is going off of the Crawford board. Um, I, yeah, so I'm going to have some new faces on the board. I, you know, I think Cecil's just really, um, holding on to what we had and have a smaller region and keep seeing how some of these larger regions have not helped us as well. And he doesn't want that to happen for us. And I respect that. Uh, but I'm going to have three new board members that are going to be coming on, replacing the longstanding government board members. I'm going to have a new rep from Cherokee County, Dennis Bush, who has been serving since the beginning. He is taking Dan Hughes' seat as the legislature. So he will no longer be on our board and he's going to be a big one for us because he also served on the mental health commission. And so has really good understanding of the mental health system. And Neil Box from Carroll, he's a very, uh, very keen, wise individual. He's a money person. He will find, he reads every single document I send him. Even if it's just, if a 50-page in a report, he reads the whole thing. I just know he's got a couple of questions. So what I really miss him to. Cecil, he's, he's been a great person to play, uh, double advocate, if you will, on our board. He even questions everything and, uh, so yeah, it's going to be very interesting to see how those three will be replaced and then adding a couple of new members from Humboldt, Pocahontas County, so.
Well.
It will work out. It will.
I think we are good with everything that you've presented to us, so.
Oh, Lord, Sandy reads everything too. Yeah.
I need one. God, she's just going to get inundated with all of my emails. I thought I was so guilty when I had said because I said so much stuff out to the board, so.
I love to be active. I've been very active. I need to assess the levels, every one of their extra things, so.
Wonderful. Really great. So gentlemen and ladies, from here, I shall let you know when you have the green light to go ahead and take action on the MOU. And I assume that now that I've sent them either to the auditors, I will probably receive all of the resolutions here this week for sure. And then you could probably wait to see action next week. So I'll let you know when I have all the cameras.
Okay, thank you. That'll work. Yep. Thank you very much, Dawn.
Thank you. Thanks for having me, Dawn.
Yeah, look forward to seeing you soon or later.
I hope so too. Thank you.
So we don't, we don't, uh, have any action on this till we get the official word. Okay.
When we met the last, on the flight, uh, what was it, November, we got for sure we carried everything. Everything, I don't know what, you know, pandemic, so, and we're here at that. Um, they did a lot in their league. They had a lot, um, people that went for their grant money. I was, I was surprised that, uh, CFS didn't plan it even, not as many people were going to be there.
Well, I guess we'll just wait for this to get across our desks and speed and take care of it, so. Thanks, Sandy. Thank you for all your hard work involved with this.
It's taken a lot of time. I'll tell you that's just, but when I say that this was the last week, was the first week I didn't have anything to do or time anything to do, but you know what I mean? But with this, the first week that I have not had a call or.
Good. Mm-hmm.
Or a meeting or whatever.
Now, this, this does look good moving forward and it was nice to hear from Dawn about it.
Yeah, I really feel good about this. One thing I just really feel a lot of is, and I, I think I forward and need to talk to you guys, apply them all, but, and I can re-send it to you. All of the, the information that we got from DHL, far as, um, uh, this was here as a finance and then devil was for services. There's core services that everybody has to have and then there's the extra, you know, the extra ones. Um, there's core services for adults and now there's core services for children, which we have to have. All regions have to have that in effect by next July, July of 20, oh my gosh, it was 21.
Okay, okay.
They are 21, no, 21, July. But anyway, um, DHL estimate, this is just an estimate, that will have $181,599, um, it says county share of FY '21 ending fund balance. Uh, statistic estimate, now what will actually end up with could be more if we left. And that will go into our fund balance with, uh, uh, Rowan Hills.
Yeah.
Now, seeing that that holds the fund balance, I should have asked her if which way Rowan Hills. But I think, if I remember right, I remember talking about that. They need that it was accounted to that Humboldt Hills.
Okay. So that money will stay with us. That's what you're saying?
I think so, but it can still only be used for mental health.
Right.
It was one of the arms.
Right.
The per capita, you know, that kind of stuff.
Yep. Well, it's nice that we're going to get a number to look at. They're, they're going to provide that. So that will be helpful for, yeah, budgeting that, I guess.
Thank you for that. But, but, but the per capita looks a lot, I mean, that.
Yeah.
But what, 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 what CFS should do. I think I told you guys, Dawn, that was the one guy I wanted to get re-elected. But he's a lord and we should, we never spent that.
Yeah, you mentioned that. And it's, we do have, getting our mind around this with the addition of the child, uh, care part of it and adding that. And it's a process, but.
It is. And the problem with, it's just like anything else, like that CARE Act money, money, they, they mandate things, but they don't necessarily tell you all the bits and pieces of it.
Of course not.
So we're, I don't, and we're still learning what we all need to do for children, which I think is great. I, I have to add, I think, for the children's mental health. And I truly feel that if we help children when they're younger, it's just going to help them alleviate problems, you know.
Absolutely.
And it costs more when you're older than when you're, when they're younger. We can get them all, that's all, but you know what I mean?
Yep.
It helps when they're younger. It could be that much, you know, hopefully maybe less prison time for different people, you know? So it, it, it took a lot of, a lot of hope.
Yeah.
In doing what we're doing. It's just figuring out exactly what we need to do and how we need to do it. Because it's a whole new avenue for everybody.
Yep. It's just too bad it took them so many years to decide to, to add children. But that's a discussion that we all, at least we're getting up to speed on all this and how it's working and why we are doing it, so. Thanks for keeping up the speed on it.
Well, thank you for letting me be on the board. It's been a lot of guys.
Oh, we're quite, we're all quite thankful as well that you're on it. All right. So we got through that. We'll wait for that to come through, to look at. Uh, is there anything else? You said that you didn't have anything in particular. Um, does anyone have?
We still haven't received anything from that range petition for Hepsi.
Waiting for a letter from Orlando.
That's what I wondered, if you got any more information, then we'll do this best patiently.
I see Ben's on the call. Do you have anything out there for us, Ben?
Hi, Ben.
Okay. Uh, last I talked to Bruce, one of the landowners, I believe, is the, the landowner that farms for him was working on writing that letter, um, and getting it in his picture. My condition, uh, but I had not heard anything in this far since I got turned in.
Okay. I think we beat that enough that we know the process, so if it proceeds along, we'll, we'll deal with it.
There's no snow in the forecast, so that's good.
Week, next week looks good.
No snow in the forecast, yeah, exactly. Uh, I have a Zoom meeting with the, uh, Phil Grant Committee on Wednesday for the Murray Bridge. So, uh, I should hear more probably by then.
Wear a tie.
Yeah, exactly.
Maybe even a sport coat. Make it look like.
I have a PowerPoint presentation right now for him.
Good deal. Excellent.
Ben, I would remind, when we visited the other day, we don't have snow coming, but I, we kind of visited about, uh, people. And I'm not, we're not telling you to go out and inspect your mailboxes, but sooner or later, we will have snow. And when the trucks go by at 40 or whatever mile an hour, flinging snow into the ditch, um, reminder that, that snow comes off with a good force. So check your mailboxes, make sure they're attached, just as a precautionary so we don't have to deal with a dozen mailboxes that are in the ditch. Appreciate that.
It'll be a lot easier for us if everybody would, uh, take with their mailbox, make sure it's aired and fast and properly so that.
It will come.
We don't wait long.
Certainly will. Good advice. Well, good luck with that thing on Wednesday.
Yep.
That's an important deal there.
Uh, otherwise, we conducted all of our interviews last week for the both positions. Uh, I'm waiting to get back, uh, I just got her phone back through here on the background. And I'm waiting to hear back after I'm sure it's all out of the news.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Look for that. So sounds good there. Anything else here?
Looking good, Jen. Oh, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, both.